Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson William Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Michael Arvenides.
Present.
Trustee Henry Berger.
Here.
Trustee Una Clark.
Present.
Trustee Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez. Not yet, I'm sure she'll be here. Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Kim.
Present.
Great. Trustee Lenaris Garcia.
Present.
Great. Trustee Mojica is absent and excused. Trustee Overfell.
Present.
Trustee Palacio.
Present.
Great. Trustee O'Donnell Torme is absent and excused. Trustee Sunshine.
Present.
Trustee Vivalo.
Present.
Trustee Wilkin, our new vice chair. Did we lose her? We had her before. Okay, great, there we go. Thanks Sandra. And trustee Martin Burke.
Present.
Terrific. You, we have no student trustee pending the election by the USS, so you have a quorum.
Okay, this public meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order.
Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the open meetings law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar and agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement and Special Counsel Glenda Grace. Did we lose Glenda?
Present.
Oh, there we go. It's not I saw you. Interim Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Christina Piappa.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverclot.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Anne Roast. Did not see her. Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Maite Uko.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Risk Audit and Compliance Richard White.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Facilities Construction Management Mohammed Atala.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
Terrific. So you, Bill.
Yeah, pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under open meetings law, the Board of Trustees is not convening its March 14th, 2022 Brooklyn Borough and Public Hearing in Person. Instead, the Office of the Secretary accepted written testimony, statements and video from concerned individuals via email at hearings@cuny.edu. A total of three written testimonies were submitted. Faculty wrote in support of the New Deal for CUNY. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, I would like to congratulate Sandra Wilkin on her appointment by Governor Hochul as vice chairperson of our board. A two-time graduate of CUNY schools, Kingsborough and Hunter, Sandra has proven to be a tireless advocate for CUNY, minority of women-owned businesses across the state, and an overall dedicated public servant. I am honored to work alongside her on behalf of the university, happy to welcome her as vice chair of our board, and Sandra's been somebody I've had the chance to work with and know for years now. Um, you know, we started working together on, on MWBE issues and have been able to work together since 2016 on this board together. So Sandra, welcome, congratulations as vice chair. I'm looking forward to having you as, as even more of a leadership position. Congrats.
Well, of course, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, we have known each other for quite a few years and worked together on areas that are so key to New York and, and your support with that, and your very, very kind and generous remarks. And no, they're very deeply appreciated. And with that, I also would like to thank Governor Hochul for the honor of serving in this capacity. I will continue to work closely with our chairman, the board, our chancellor, and the administration, presidents, faculty, students, alumni, and community and elective leaders who are so key to the supporting the advancement and the academic services and success of the student body. And as our wonderful chairman had just indicated, I am so proud of being a graduate of both Kingsborough and of Hunter College. And this, I was told, that this in fact is the very first position as a woman graduate of both Kingsborough and Hunter, and honored to serve in that role. And also told that what this is called is a CUNY twofer. So I, I will be very proud to serve in that capacity. And as, as we soon celebrate the 175th anniversary of the Free Academy, which became City College and expanded to become CUNY, I look forward to the important work ahead. Thank you and thank this incredible board.
Thank you, Sandra. So well said. So well said. Looking forward to it. Um, one of the very important responsibilities of board members is to participate in the Middle States accreditation process. Just today, I've heard two of our trustees talking earlier, but just today, our trustees participated at LaGuardia Community College. On March 28th, they'll participate at College of Staten Island, and on April 4th, they'll participate at Hostos Community College. By the way, who participated in LaGuardia earlier today? Henry, I, Henry and who else?
And myself, Bill.
Excellent. Again, thank you both so much. Um, it goes a long way to helping our colleges in the accreditation process. So thank you both so much. And to all my colleagues on the board, thank you for the time that you continue to invest in our institutions. Thank you all so much. And finally, we're happy to hear that commencement ceremonies will be convened in person this spring. I know that trustees are delighted to share in this important celebration. I'm looking forward to it also. There is almost nothing more exciting. See the chancellor nodding over there. There's almost nothing that is more exciting and more of just a positive event than our graduations, than our commencements. And I am looking forward to being involved also this year. So again, it's something for all of us to look forward to. Um, with that, let me ask Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for his comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Thompson, I'm great to see all of you, trustees, presidents and vice chancellors. Before I bring you up to date on some of the things going on here at the University of CUNY, I want to acknowledge the situation that has compelled the world's attention over much of the past month. CUNY stands with the people of Ukraine against the horrific Russian siege of their country, and we are inspired by their incredible courage. We mourn the loss of one of our own, Brent Renault, a filmmaker and photojournalist and who was a student, a City College MFA's in Creative Writing Program. Brent was killed while bravely supporting, reporting on the story of the refugee crisis. Our hearts and prayers are with the CUNY students, faculty and staff who are personally touched by this crisis. As you know, after two full years of some disruption, this semester, we have returned to a more in-person presence in classrooms and lecture halls, labs, libraries, and music studies, research facilities, and administrative offices. Our community has sustained many losses and made many sacrifices over these two past years, but we have persevered, and I'm happy to give you a firsthand report of the palpable sense of renewal our rebound has brought to our campuses. In the weeks since the semester opened, I've made weekly visits to our colleges. I've been re-energized welcoming students and thanking faculty and staff during visits to John Jay, Queens College, City College, Lehman, Goodman Community College, and the School of Professional Studies. And I look forward to many more visits in the coming weeks. The pandemic, as we know, is not quite over, but signs of a post-pandemic future are all around us in our city and our university. Two weeks ago, we were able to lift CUNY's mask mandate. The temporary masking requirement was put in place last August as the Delta variant started to surge. The lifting of the mask mandate follows CDC guidance that masks are no longer necessary in communities with low COVID-19 levels, like New York City's boroughs, which also led Governor Hochul and Mayor Adams to end the requirement for schools across the city and the state. We are optimistic that we're on the right track. Our testing program continues to show a drastic and sustained reduction in COVID transmission on all CUNY campuses, mirroring the citywide trend since Omicron peak last January. Last week, 9,690 tests were conducted across our campuses and offices, of which 32 were positive or a point 300%. The suspension of mandatory masking does not alter the vaccine and booster requirement for students enrolled in hybrid or fully in-person courses, or the vaccination mandate for faculty, non-teaching instructional staff, and ECPs. In fact, it is the success of the vaccine mandates and CUNY's weekly testing program that allows us to safely lift the mask mandate. As always, I want to stress that while we're very hopeful that the decline in COVID will continue, we all know by now that this virus is hard to predict, and we are prepared to move quickly to modify any policy, like bringing the mask back should circumstances change. Moving beyond COVID has been a good month for CUNY on several fronts. We announced a partnership with Amazon in which the company will provide an annual benefit to cover tuition and select fees for qualifying New York hourly employees to attend any of eight participating CUNY schools. This collaboration is the first partnership of Amazon's Career Choice Program with any college in New York State. It will give as many as 30,000 workers at Amazon sites in New York State access to over 500 associate and bachelor's degrees programs at CUNY colleges in all five boroughs. The initial cohort comprises four community colleges, the MCC, Bronx, Kingsborough and LaGuardia, and three senior colleges, the College of Staten Island, City College, and Queens College, and also the CUNY School of Professional Studies. The collaboration is a powerful example of the kind of public-private partnerships we have been working to create over the past few years as we expand our role as both a premier engine of economic opportunity for New Yorkers and a driver of the cities and states workforce. Last week, I visited the CUNY School of Professional Studies to announce a bold initiative to invest 8 million in federal stimulus funds to build online degree capacity across the university and produce high-quality online courses and degree programs that meet our students' needs. This exciting and multifaceted effort will enhance capacity and resources to make student-focused innovations in online education, and it will provide dedicated personnel to support both faculty and students. Following last year's expansions of mental health services, and of course, our CUNY comeback program, this comprehensive online education initiative marks the latest example of our use of federal stimulus funding to take a forward-looking approach to equitable student success. To lead this effort, we are fortunate to be able to lean on the expertise on CUNY SPS, the university's premier and award-winning online institution. I'm also pleased to share a significant update on the development of our Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative, or BRESI for short. You might recall that this bold and needed initiative is a major part of the 10 million gifts we received from the Mellon Foundation back in August of 2020. After a year of research, we have reached a pivotal stage in our ambitious plan to reimagine race ethnicity, an area that spans academics and research, as well as hiring and promotion, campus culture, and student advancement. A 12-member governing BRESI council is now being assembled, and we begin to build the initiative from the ground up, bringing together faculty and students, centers and institutes from throughout our system. Beginning this spring, the council will solicit grant proposals from faculty, students, staff, and entities to see promising work in curriculum development, faculty and student research, and other areas. Among the initiative's longer-range goals is the development of a university-wide PhD and dual MA programs in Black Race and Ethnic Studies that would help CUNY join a select group of leading institutions that have created graduate programs in this area. This will all be advanced in consultation with faculty governance bodies across the university. This initiative is now positioned to be a prime driver of CUNY's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. As you know, one of our priorities is to develop new and better ways to help our students prepare for careers. One of the key strategies is forging industry partnerships, so I am always pleased to bring you updates on this front. Comdesse and Foundation announced a 1.5 million grand to support the career success of CUNY students through a partnership focused on building campus capacity to work with employers. This, the multi-year support will begin with an analysis of existing models for engaging employers and scale successful practice to CUNY campuses beginning in the next academic year. And kudos to Dean Lauren Anderson and her team for this award and so many others. CUNY is one of 15 institutions awarded an innovation grant from the STRADA Education Network to develop new career opportunities for students of color, first-generation students, and non-traditional students. The grant will fund the CUNY Alumni Activation Initiative that will leverage the expansive CUNY alumni network and relationships with companies that employ large numbers of CUNY graduates to improve post-graduation outcomes for students of color and students from low-income backgrounds. We have plenty to be proud of CUNY as we mark Women's History Month. CUNY continues to celebrate record representation of women in positions of leadership across the system, including a recent report that found that the Graduate Center is the nation's second-most gender-diverse higher education institution in the country. The Graduate Center is one of only 11 research-intensive institutions where women hold at least half of the senior positions. Women also represent 43% of its tenure faculty, leading the country in that category. The recognition includes the Graduate Center and five other schools that come under the administrative umbrella of the Graduate Center, the Newmark Journalism School, the School of Labor, the Graduate School of Public Health, CUNY School of Professional Studies, and the Macaulay Honors College. I am very proud of the strides we've made in recruiting and promoting more women to leadership positions at CUNY. In the last three years, with the leadership and support of this board, we have appointed women to serve as president or deans in six colleges, the Graduate Center, Hostos, York, Queensborough, Medgar Evers, and soon, the Law School. They join the five other colleges led by women, Brooklyn College, Hunter, John Jay, Kingsborough Community College, and the Newmark Day School. And we also have a woman interim dean at Macaulay. And while we're in the topic of Women's History Month, let me join our chair in congratulating our very own CUNY twofer trustee Sandra Wilkin, who has been named by Governor Hochul last week as vice chair of this board. Uh, she's been a great leader, a great friend, mentor, and a tireless advocate for CUNY's role as an engine for social mobility and a trade blazer for women in the construction industry. So congratulations from all the chancellor's team to Vice Chair Wilkin. I was also thrilled to open our third annual CUNY Career Compass for Women Leaders Conference last week. We have more than 2,500 participants join the conference over two days, and I want to acknowledge Dolly Martinez's role in leading this effort and making it a reality. And moving on to a lightning round of additional good news, this year, a total of 22 students from all seven, all seven CUNY community colleges have been named a semifinalist for the highly selective Jack Kent Cooke Transfer Scholarship. This includes seven students from BMC, the most of any school in the nation, and the first two Goodman students ever to gain this distinction, Bashir Ruwara and Camila Rodriguez, who I had the pleasure of meeting when I visited Goodman two weeks ago. The students will find out in May who has been selected for the transfer scholarship, which awards up to 55,000 annually for up to three years to complete a bachelor's degree. We congratulate all of them and we wish them the best of luck. It's March Madness, and I know that it's not often that I talk about sports in my report, but here is one of CUNY, is one CUNY student athlete whose exploits and excellence demands attention. Queens College junior Seda LaRaudi Garcia made history this month when she was invited to try out for the US Women's Winter Basketball National Team, making her the first CUNY student athlete to be invited to a Team USA tryout in any sport. A degenerative disease forced her to stop playing standing basketball when she was a teenager, but she discovered that she did not have to be sidelined. Seda exemplifies the resolve that drives CUNY students, alumni, faculty and staff, including those with disabilities. She is also a testament to the success of CUNY's growing inclusive and adaptive sports platform, a true model of inclusivity that allows students of all abilities and talents to benefit from team sports and intercollegiate competition at any team level. We wish Seda good luck at the selection camp this month. And good news from the CUNY history faculty, my first home history, as you guys know. Christina Richardson, an associate professor at Queens College and at the Graduate Center, has won the Dan David Prize, a 300,000 award from Tel Aviv University that is the largest history prize in the world, and has been likened to be a genius grant for historians. Dr. Richardson studies the medieval Islamic world and the Roma, and she is the author of two books on marginalized Islamic groups in the Middle Ages. We congratulate her on this great honor. A final quick update on our searches. Last year, we kick off three dean searches for the Macaulay Honors College, the School of Professional Studies, and the Newmark Journalism School. Our plan is to have the new deans appointed for all three of these searches by the end of the spring semester, and for most, if not all, of the deans to be in place when we begin classes in the fall. I am very grateful to the nine trustees serving or chairing this search committees. My sincere thanks to all of you. I know chairing and serving in those search committees is truly a labor of love. So thank you. Finally, we are now firmly in the thick of the semester, and I don't have to remind anyone that yesterday was the first day of spring. I'm reminded that in just a few months, we hope to be celebrating, like our chairman said, in-person graduations for the first time since 2019, before the pandemic began. That will be a milestone moment in the history of the journey we have taken together these last two years. Graduation season is always my favorite season, but this year is going to be even more exciting and feel more rewarding than usual. I cannot wait to put on my ceremonial attire and be there with our students, our faculty, our staff, their family and loved ones. And we will focus at that time on the great work that lies ahead to sustain this university's momentum and advance our city's recovery. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you so much. Let's now turn to the items requiring, requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely, and we can't see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask the members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the records, and we'll go from there. For clarity and coordination, I'll ask the secretary to read all of the items. Um, item number one.
Okay, so I just, for the record, Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez has joined us. So for the voting record, just so that we're on the record. Okay, item number one. Approval of minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of January 31st, 2022.
May I have a second for this item?
Burger, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number two, the Committee on Audit. Item 2A is a resolution requesting to approve non-audit services provided by the university's external auditors. A request for proposal was issued by the university and is seeking an external vendor to perform an analysis of the university's executive compensation plan. Grant Thornton LLP, who also serves as the university's external auditor, was selected to perform the services. University management and leadership at Grant Thornton have both separately reviewed the scope of the non-audit services and concluded that this work does not interfere with the independence of Grant Thornton in respect to its audit work. The Audit Committee has approved these non-audit services provided by the university's external auditors, Grant Thornton LLP, as required by the University Audit Committee Charter, Section 4.01.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Arvenides, second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? Excuse me? Okay. We'll now vote. Please respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number three is the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research Activities. Item 3A is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in Black and Latino studies leading to the Bachelor of Arts degree at Peru College.
Like to move that item. May I have a second?
Burger, second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3B. Sorry. Okay, item 3B is a resolution regarding the establishment of an Associate of Science Program in Criminal Justice at Medgar Evers College.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution regarding the establishment of the School of Science and Allied Health at Medgar Evers College.
Like to move that item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3D is a resolution regarding the establishment of the Leadership for Democracy and Social Justice at CUNY Institute at City College. at CUNY Institute at City College and the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies.
Like to move that item. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item three E is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA Dashboard.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number four is the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Item four A is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration Report. The March CFSA report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record between December fourth, 2021 and January twenty-eighth, 2022. The report contains a total of one hundred and twenty-eight actions, including thirty-five appointments and reappointments with tenure, fifty-four fellowship leaves, and twenty-two ECP interim and regular appointments.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
I'll ask you a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number four B is a resolution to distribute optional retirement plan and tax-deferred annuity plan-generated fees to plan participants. In 2015, CUNY was authorized to establish revenue credit accounts for the optional retirement plan, the tax-deferred annuity plan, and the Frozen City University of New York Optional Retirement Plan. TIA accrues additional amounts to the plan's revenue credits accounts each year that each plan generates a level of revenue to TIA above an agreed-upon level. These accruals have resulted in a substantial balance, which in part is used for the ongoing payment of plan expenses. The university has determined the most equitable course of action is to be, is to credit these balances to the participants' accounts in each respective plan.
I'd like to move that item. Second?
Ergor, second.
Thank you, Henry. Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four C is a resolution to amend certain investment options in the City University of New York Optional Retirement Program and Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York established an investment policy statement in 2014 establishing, among other things, guidelines for the university's management of the City University of New York Optional Retirement Plan and the City University of New York Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. In accordance with the guidelines established under the IPS and as part of the review process of the array of investment funds within the university plans, the university has been advised by its investment advisor, CAP Trust, formerly known as KMEC Retirement Group, to substitute the two existing large-cap growth funds, American Beacon Large-Cap Growth and Tia Craft Growth and Income, with JP Morgan Large-Cap Growth Fund in all of the university's plans. The university has also been advised to substitute an existing mid-cap growth fund, Parnassus Mid-Cap Growth, with another existing mid-cap growth fund, MFS Mid-Cap Growth, and also to substitute an existing International Equity Fund, Lazard International Equity, with another International Equity Fund, MFS International Diversification. The investment option changes recommended by the university investment advisor, CAP Trust, and accepted by the university will be made available for new contributions to the plans and, where permitted, participant transfers from the current investment options. In accordance with New York State Education Law, Section sixty-two fifty-one, all investments made available under the optional retirement plan will be provided through annuity contracts.
I'd like to move this item. Do I have a second? Um, is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item, excuse me, four D is a resolution to appoint Bernard Gant as Vice President of Enrollment Management at Bronx Community College.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four E is a resolution to appoint Dr. Sheng Kui Wang as Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost at Eugenia Maria de Osto's Community College.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
I'll ask you a second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four F is a resolution of appreciation for Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget and Chief Financial Officer, Matthew Sapienza. In 2004, Matthew Sapienza joined the university as university budget director and was subsequently appointed by the Board of Trustees as Associate Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance in 2010, as Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance in 2014, and as Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer in 2016. Mr. Sapienza has dedicated his distinguished thirty-four-year career to public service, having served as Deputy Budget Director at the New York City Department of Education and as a senior budget analyst for the New York City Fire Department before his seventeen-year tenure at the university. Under Mr. Sapienza's leadership, the University Office of Budget and Finance, OBF, has guided the university through financial challenges and has strengthened the university's fiscal integrity. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Matthew Sapienza for his outstanding service to the City University of New York.
I'd like to move the item for this great public servant. May I have a second?
Kim, second.
Discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only, ah, yes.
I, I, may I, may I sort of say what everybody's feeling the deep appreciation? I think everybody in this board and the entire chancellery and the university has for Matt's incredible service for not just the, the work that he did, but his incredible style in representing the university, always with, with distinction and his dedication to all parts of the university. So I, I know that I, that I speak for many. I wanted just to say that.
Chancellor, you do. Matt was a great professional and served the CUNY institution so well. Uh, so thank you for your words. Absolutely. I think we all agree. Any other comments? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four G is a resolution to appoint Christina Chiappa as Interim Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance and Chief Financial Officer. Since 2015, Christina has been serving as the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the university, where she assists with overseeing and managing the financial activities of the university. The chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Kim, second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Congratulations, Christina. Congratulations.
Item four H is a resolution to amend the Graduate School and University Center Governance Plan. The Governance Plan of the Graduate School and University Center was last amended and made effective by the Board of Trustees at its October twenty-fifth, 2016 meeting. The proposed amendment would add a new graduate council standing committee under Section two point four point C of the Governance Plan, the Budget Committee. The purpose of the Budget Committee is to offer recommendations related to the Graduate Center's spending plans and review its financial position on a periodic basis. The proposed amendment was approved by the Graduate Council of the Graduate Center on May fifth, 2021, an adoption recommended by the president thereafter.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Items four I through four L are resolutions to appoint early tenure with an application of bylaw six point two point C two effective September one, 2022 to the following individuals. Jack Hanson with early tenure at the City College of New York, Weston Haywood with early tenure at Hunter College, Alexis Jamal with early tenure at Hunter College, and Calvin John Smiley with early tenure at Hunter College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
My second.
Any discussion on items four I through four L? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Items four M and four N are resolutions to appoint distinguished professors effective April first, 2022, with compensation of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars per annum in addition to their regular academic salary subject to financial ability as follows. Dr. David Gruber as distinguished professor of biology at Baruch College and Dr. Andrea Alu as distinguished professor at the Graduate Center of the City University of New York.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Any discussion on these items? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Those items are approved. And congratulations to each of the accomplished members of our faculty. We're proud to have you. It's a part of our academic community.
Items four O through four B are resolutions to name scholarships, endowments, and facilities as follows. The Miriam Sarahczyk Professorship at the City College of New York, the Sternberg Family Professorship at the City College of New York, the Francis Deegan Horowitz Child Development and Learning Center at the Graduate Center, the Stephen Hayden Scholarship at Hunter College, the Gardner Shenker Student Scholars Program at LaGuardia Community College, the Lucille A. Bova Food Pantry at Queensborough Community College, the Chaiho and FY Chu Scholarship at Queensborough Community College, the Thomas Chen Family Crystal Windows Endowment for Contemporary Visual Asian Art at Queens College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second for this?
June o'clock, second.
Any discussion on these items four O through four B? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Those items are approved.
Item number five is the Committee on Facilities, Planning, and Management. Item number five A is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to contract for software technical support and subscription services for the PM Web Project Management System.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Oh, without seconds.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. The chancellor has asked the board to consider an additional resolution. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record, and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, please read the resolution.
Item number six is a resolution to appoint Renee Sarmiento as Interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management at the City University of New York. Whereas Renee T. Sarmiento has been Vice President of Enrollment Management and Associate Provost at Lehman College since 2014, where she leads the largest portfolio of enrollment management and academic programs within the CUNY system, providing leadership and promoting innovation to seven senior staff and fifteen program directors. And whereas Dr. Sarmiento developed Lehman's long-term enrollment strategy using a comprehensive, data-driven, and inclusive approach to ensure participation performance and advancement of student success and unprecedented outcomes for Lehman College, Lehman achieved an unprecedented record enrollment growth of twenty-five percent or five percent annual growth over five years. Enrollment peaked to fifteen thousand five hundred and three for fall 2019, which is the largest enrollment since nineteen seventy-five when tuition was free. And whereas during Dr. Sarmiento's tenure between fall 2014 and fall 2018, the percentage of full-time first, full-time first-time freshmen that earned thirty or more credits in the first year increased seventeen point two percent, which is the highest percentage point increase among CUNY senior colleges. And whereas from 2009 to 2014, Dr. Sarmiento was Assistant Dean of Enrollment Services at LaGuardia Community College, and from 2003 to 2009, she was Senior Director of Enrollment Services at LaGuardia, where she chaired the Enrollment Strategies Committee, responsible for a four-year enrollment increase of thirteen point three percent in the number of individual students attending, and a ten point four percent increase in the number of students attending full-time from 2009 to 2013. And whereas Dr. Sarmiento has also served at Pacific College of Oriental Medicine, where she was the Chief Operating Officer from nineteen ninety-eight to 2003, and Director of Admissions and Financial Aid from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-eight, and at the Design Institute of San Diego as Director of Financial Aid and Student Services. And whereas Dr. Sarmiento holds an ADD, an Executive Leadership Administration and Policy from Fordham University, and MS and Urban Affairs from Hunter College, and a BA in Business Administration from National University, now therefore be it resolved that Renee Sarmiento be appointed as Interim Vice Chancellor of Enrollment Management at the City University of New York, effective April one, 2022, and an annual salary of two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, subject to financial ability. The explanation is as follows. Dr. Sarmiento's experience and expertise will allow the university the opportunity to begin a nationwide search for this critical position.
Motion to add item number six to our agenda. May I have a second?
I motion, I second.
Thank you, Angela. Item, the item is added. I now present item number six. May I have a second?
Ergor, second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Chair?
Chair? Yes.
Just, just want to add to the information provided in the, in the resolution. We are incredibly thankful to our current VP, Sarmiento from Lehman, to allow to be considered for this interim position that we have in the central office. I think everybody is focused on, on enrollment these days as we see national, state, and city trends. I think her expertise is going to be of incredible value to us. I'm particularly happy that she brings in extensive knowledge of all parts of our system, having served in enrollment leadership positions in one, in a community college, LaGuardia, and then at a four-year institution at Lehman, in addition to bringing experience from other institutions also in the private sector. So I think all of that will be very helpful as we continue to plot our enrollment strategy and move forward.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Uh, there being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn, or I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second. June o'clock, second.
All right, we are adjourned. Everyone, take care, be safe. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.